...America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and keeping this room nice and warm for us. It's a pleasure to see everybody here this evening. And at this time, we're going to begin by turning the meeting over to Dr. McLaughlin for our presentations.
Thank you. Well, we're in for a treat tonight. We have a few presentations. And we're going to begin with a preview of our Copeland Middle School musical. We have Ms. Odessa and Ms. Gloria to help us put that on. I'll turn it right over to you guys. We'll get to the good stuff.
Anna Torres is our student director. She's currently checking sound for us. A little bit about the show. We are performing All Shook Up, which is an Elvis Presley musical, so it's all music by Elvis. The premise of the show is actually based on Shakespeare's Twelfth Night. So there's a lot of distinct identity, lots of love triangles, which you know from middle school, super appropriate. And the performance is going to be this month.
Yes, and so we will be starting with a matinee for our senior citizens in town on Wednesday, March 20. And then we'll have three performances here Thursday and Friday nights at seven. And then Saturday afternoon, two tickets will be available at the door. We recommend getting here early. If you haven't attended a production before, the line tends to go right up the door in the recording block. So it's a good idea to get here early so that you can get a good spot. And tickets will be $7 for adults and $5 for students and seniors.
All right, you have one more song for you? Go run away. Take my hand, take my whole life too. For I can't help falling in love with you. For I can't help falling in love with you. I can't help, I can't help, I can't help falling in. I can't help, I can't help, I can't help falling in.
Sandra.
Oh, and Chad.
Natalie.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And I think that gives us a lot to look forward to in a couple of weeks. Certainly, anybody who's watching our board meeting, I think will be enticed to come. So please, please know how thankful we are for you being here and make sure you linger around so you can have some refreshments in a few minutes. Thank you once again. And at this time, we're going to ask Dr. Tanamiyan to come up and to share a little bit about our spelling bee honorees. And then we're going to call up folks to be recognized, participate in that particular activity.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In a few moments, we're going to be recognizing all of our winners from the in-district spelling meet that we sponsored over the holiday season. And before we do that, just would like to recognize, we have members from the Denville-Rockaway area Women's Club here, and their president, Anne Wassenberger, in the back. Would you mind standing and being recognized? We can thank them. The spelling bee that the Women's Club sponsors was the impetus for our spelling bees. And so it's one of those examples where we have really positive ripple effect through a community partnership. So we thank you for your partnership and your leadership. And with that, I think we're prepared to honor our winners from our fourth and fifth grade students from the holiday season.
Brandon Ichmeyer. Kristin Kalindres. Jordan Jermaine. Claire Crow. Evan Gardner. Eli Angio. Sophia Musa. Vanessa Cabrera. Chloe Kilgallen. Sophia Grove. Ella Tommasini. Brian Vulcan. Anika Zola. Veer Patel. Jeremy Frenden. Rebecca Williams. Masieke Morgan. Claire Catalina. Gabriel Restrepo. Ava John. And Trias Sertie. Congratulations to all of our students. Those who aren't here tonight, you will obviously get their certificates to that. We thank you again for organizing this great activity. Thank you on behalf of the district. Would you like to say something?
I'd just like to say to the parents who like their kids, the spelling bee and came to cheer them, it was a wonderful thing. Thanks to all the principals and teachers who helped make this happen on their end. We just sent out letters to say bring the kids up there. We hope to do it again next year.
Thank you so much. As you may be aware, our district has been involved in a character education initiative this year. And Copeland Middle School has been pursuing character education with new vigor. And to describe Character Mondays and that program that's happening here in Copeland is Mr. Gennella, so I'd invite you to come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alfonso Gennella, the principal of Copeland Middle School. Thank you for coming this evening. Going to have a brief presentation on a new initiative, a new program at Copeland Middle School called Character Mondays, which is built around the Rockaway Township core values of honesty, empathy, acceptance, respect, and trust. And to really capture this, we wanted to give you examples of some of the activities that your students are engaging in. We have a committee of ten staff members, four of which that are here with us this evening. And we also have student participants that help us out and contribute to the development of some of the lessons. So I will give you a brief overview, if I may. The members of our committee are Megan Bowes, Erin Boots King, Chrissy Champy, Caitlin Distasi, Kenny Fugess, Franny Gelli, Katie Greis, Rachel Isler, Brittany LaRusso, Janet Moran, and Marie Honor Revely. And to give you an idea, this is a homegrown program. What you see and what your kids are experiencing are ideas that come directly from our committee. What we wanted to do is we wanted your children to feel not only connected to the school and to the building and the program, we wanted them to feel connected to their teachers and see them in a little bit of a different light, outside of the academics, getting to know who they are personally, know what their struggles have been in life, and what are the experiences and people that have really shaped them. So what you will see is your character program is based out of homeroom. So every homeroom teacher obviously facilitates the lesson. But every homeroom has a second, in some cases, a third teacher from other areas in the building. So this allows sixth graders to get to know seventh and eighth grade teachers. And also just gives us a better opportunity for students to connect. And again, our big focus is we want our students to connect with our teacher. We launched in December 2018, and our first topic, which was a little outside of the core values, was resilience, the ability to bounce back from life's disappointments, failures, and pains. How do we respond when things don't go our way? And I have to tell you, it was, this lesson was one of the better experiences I've had in eighteen years of education, hearing teachers and learning about their personal struggles and having students open up about things that are going on in their everyday lives. So at this time, I'm going to ask you to open your minds, open your hearts, and our committee is going to give you a little sample of what we do here every other Monday.
My name is Caitlin Distasi, and I'm a health and physical education teacher. And the story about resilience that I shared with my students was about how in eighth grade, I lost my core group of friends. What had happened was they were choosing to go to a different high school when I was choosing to stay where we were. And because of that, they grew very close with one another, kind of alienating me out of the group. And I felt like I didn't belong anymore. And these were friends that I had since elementary school. So what happened going into ninth grade, obviously, I was upset and I was sad thinking, I'm going into high school, I'm not going to have any friends. What am I going to do? And being a very quiet, shy person, it's hard for me to kind of step out of my comfort zone. But I knew that that was something that I needed to do, and I knew that it would be a new opportunity for me to make new friends. So I started to get involved in school activities. I joined the band. I joined different sports. And I created friendships that I actually still have to this day. And I shared that story with my students because I felt that they could relate, because in those situations, they might feel like it's the worst thing possible. But if you stay positive and you keep going, everything works out the way it's supposed to.
Hello, my name is Katie Greis. I am a seventh grade special education teacher at Copeland. And my story for resilience, I asked the students, some that I knew were athletes, to think of a time when they were at a sporting event or doing something where it didn't really go well for them. And then I told them that I am a rock climber, indoors, outdoors. I am always on that rock wall. And as I started to get better, a lot of my friends were more experienced rock climbers. So I always wanted to be able to keep up and to be able to get as good as they are. Finally, one day, one of my friends told me, I bet you could do one of the expert climbs in the gym. So I looked at it, thought, no way, I'm not going to be able to do this. But I tried. So I am halfway up on that rope. My arms hurt. I'm tired. You know, I'm sweating. I just want to be done. I looked at the wall, and I looked at my friends, and I was like, no, no, I want to go down. They wouldn't let me. So I sat. I waited a little bit. I shook out my hands. And I said, okay, I'll keep trying. So I finally made it to the top of that wall. And from that point on, I knew that I could do any of those twelve climbs in the gym, and that I would be able to successfully do it. And I figured out after that time that if I'm unable to do it, then even though I couldn't do it this day, tomorrow's a new day, and I'll either get better or I'll get it done that day.
I'm Brittany LaRusso. I am the school counselor for seventh grade. My story that I shared on resiliency with the seventh graders I was with was when I was a freshman in grad school. I was really excited to meet with my advisor and find out my schedule. And when I looked at it, I saw that I had to take a statistics and research class. And as a counselor, I was very disappointed because I was looking forward to taking counseling classes and writing papers. And having to take another math class was extremely dreadful, to say the least. So as a freshman, I was like, kind of really looking for some guidance, and I was like, how am I going to get through this? So I had to spend a lot of time going for some extra help with going to after-school or after, kind of like, class programs, meeting with my professor for some extra help, setting up some study programs with other students in my classes. So when I shared this story with the students, they were able to relate, because I do have students that come into my office frequently, and they'll kind of say, why don't I learn this material in math class? Or how does this relate to me? Or how does this relate to my life and history? So when I kind of shared that with them is that I need to learn about statistics as a counselor. How does that relate to what I'm doing with you guys when I talk to you? I kind of am able to share that I was able to go through research and understand, you know, when I go through that research, different things that I can learn. So that was how we kind of were able to relate.
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Bowes. I'm the sixth grade counselor here at Copeland. My story of resilience was when I played field hockey in college. So I worked really hard, and I gained a starting spot my freshman year, and I was really excited. And the big day came for our first game, and we lost miserably. We, yeah, it was rough. And then we lost the next game, and we lost the next game, and the game after that. But we kept pushing. We kept, you know, working hard at practice every day. But no matter how hard I, you know, trained myself, no matter how fast I ran, we kept losing. We lost thirteen games that season. So it came to our last game, game number fourteen. And, you know, I looked at the girls. We all looked at each other. Our captain actually just quit. So it was really tough for us, but we're like, it's now or never. So we got game number fourteen. I know none of you probably know anything about field hockey, but I got the ball at the top of the circle. It's kind of like a movie. I took a shot, and we scored. And they ended up scoring the game-winning goal of our last game of that season. So did I want to win all fourteen games? Yeah, probably. But the feeling that I got from winning that last game, after giving it my all, and trying my best, I'll never forget that feeling. So, thanks.
At the end of each character activity, I'll recap what the kids went over in a Friday newsletter. And if I know everyone here takes the time to read them, I always ask that you have conversations with your children and share your story, whether it be resiliency, honesty, or the next example you're going to see from our students in the case of empathy. We're going to conclude with this presentation, and we are going to challenge you to do something for the next two weeks when we're done. So at this time, I'd like to present our students.
Hi, my name is Chloe Aaron.
Hi, my name is Brady Guev.
Hi, my name is Joseph Poyet.
Hi, my name is Roger Brinfield.
Hi, my name is Chris Apple.
Please close your eyes and follow my instructions. Engage through your nose and out through your mouth. Engage through your nose and out through your mouth. Engage through your nose and out through your mouth. Engage through your nose and out through your mouth. Engage through your nose and out through your mouth. Please keep your eyes closed and engage in a compassionate exercise.
Picture yourself as you hear or think these words. May I be safe, well, and happy. May I be fully accepted and respected. Picture someone you love and care about and silently say his or her name in the place of a blank. May blank be safe, well, and happy. May he or she be fully accepted and respected. Identify and picture someone you really don't know but see fairly regularly, such as the person who served you lunch in the cafeteria whilst getting you off the path in the hall. May blank be safe, well, and happy. May he or she be fully accepted and respected. Picture someone you don't like or are in conflict with and silently say his or her name. May blank be safe, well, and happy. May he or she be fully accepted and respected. You may open your eyes.
Have to be, there's a need to understand and share their feelings and hope.
Scientists who study empathy have determined that we are born with empathy, and we can strengthen our empathy muscles with practice.
That was a question for the audience here. Anyone think of a time that they showed empathy to someone else? I'd like to share one, if I may. The Copeland family experienced a tragic event. I received a phone call at 9:00 AM that one of our German teachers had a sudden passing in her family. She had found out a little minutes earlier. And the teacher elected to come to school today because she wanted to be around her students. So first period, I popped into the classroom to check on the teacher. And, you know, what I saw obviously, the teacher was upset. But twenty-two students consulted her during that period, and were so empathetic and so caring about her. And every subsequent period, we saw that, and saw our staff rally around her. And there were community members coming in, including their work colleagues. So all day today, parents and the parents of students in the building were coming in to show support for this teacher, all this happened. And you just, yeah, it was a tragic event, a tragic event. However, that the best spot that teacher felt deep was here at school with her kids and her colleagues. And the type of kids we had here are the kids that you saw on display, the kids that you see on display up front, the type of parents and community that we have here, really is like no other. Again, I wrote a letter to the community, and the thing that I ask is, take the empathy challenge. Next two weeks, everyone that you come in contact with, whether it be a positive experience or a negative experience, try and look at life through their lens and see that maybe the world will look like a different place. These young men certainly have been active and proactive in doing that. We are extremely proud of them and the work they've done. I'm extremely proud of the work that the committee has done. And there is a quote that I use in every presentation, pretty much every faculty meeting that I've presented at, and it goes a little something like this. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever happens. This program that we're developing is not only a collection of students, staff members, board members, superintendent and assistant superintendent, but it's you, the community. We want to create something that's authentic. We want to create something that's enduring. We want to incorporate our building goals, which is mental health, well-being for staff and students. The activity that the students put together ties in very nicely with that building goal. What we ask you to do is, using these themes and topics that we cover, reinforce them at home, make them part of your everyday life. This is our school. We are our children. This is Rockaway Township, township life and all. Thank you for your support.
So at this time, we do have, we're going to take a little bit of a break, a few minutes. We have some refreshments over here on the side, so please help yourself. We don't want to have to bring any home because they're not on the diet, okay? So please help yourself.
So, can we leave?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good job.
I'm coming.
There's still food, so help yourself. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township public school. The board reminds those individuals who can take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? Mrs. Messick?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the board? All bad. Motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Cherico will give you the second. Moving on to communications. Was there any need in mission since last week to communications?
Yes. Yesterday, we received an email from one of our teachers at A D M, Ms. Locke, requesting permission to do a presentation at a board meeting. And Dr. McLaughlin will respond to whether it will be scheduled someday.
Thank you. Moving on to approve the minutes of February twenty-eighth. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second. Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Helberg.
Any comments from the board? Now, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Support times report?
Thank you. Good evening. As the board and the public is aware, we have engaged over several weeks in an effort to identify a new district leader in the area of special education. Sincere appreciation is extended to our parents and staff who participated in our online surveys and in our in-person meetings to establish the attributes most necessary for our next administrator. Thanks are further provided to our stakeholder interview committee who partnered in the final step of consideration for our candidates. I'm pleased tonight to recommend to the Board of Education, Ms. Christina Dalapaloo. Ms. Dalapaloo is an experienced public school administrator and a former special education teacher. We look forward to her tenure in the district and are enthusiastically looking forward to the valuable contributions that she is poised to make. Our Q-SAC visit, scheduled for Monday, March the fourth, was postponed due to weather. The county super, very anticlimactic for us because, you know, we're all looking forward to it. The county superintendent has informed us that our new review date will occur in April, with specifics expected later this week. District safety continues to be an utmost priority in our district. Tonight, I'm happy to ask the board to approve a shared service resolution with the Rockaway, with Rockaway Township to secure and appoint a school resource officer. The school resource officer will be assigned to Copeland Middle School and will begin as soon as both governing bodies have adopted the agreement and the hiring process can occur. It's my understanding that the municipality will consider approval on March the twelfth. I will be in attendance on March the twelfth and encourage the governing body to approve that resolution and to thank the committee for their support of what we know will only benefit our children here in Copeland Middle School and in the school district. Today, I was at a meeting, a Safe Schools meeting, with the districts who make up the Morris Hills Regional. We are the final school district to appoint either a Class Three officer or a school resource officer. So I, the board has been tremendously supportive in pursuing this option. We know that this will be a great benefit to our children's safety and well-being, and we look forward to this occurring. So I will report back to you after the March twelfth municipal meeting. And again, I thank the township for their commitment to the safety of our students and for working in tandem with us to provide the best measures possible to safeguard our children. Also, in the area of safety, fifty-four indoor cameras have been purchased and have been received for Copeland Middle School. And in addition to the fifty-five indoor cameras, three new exterior cameras as well. These cameras will supplement those already in place and provide increased coverage and increased access. During the month of watch, we will be examining optimal placement for the cameras and making plans for installation. Earlier today, I participated, as I mentioned, with superintendents from around Morris County with local and county law enforcement in the annual Safe Schools meeting. This meeting addresses themes of safe schools and serves to underscore the cooperation between schools and law enforcement. We are fortunate to have extremely strong ties and a wonderful working relationship in our community with Chief McBarland and the Rockaway Township Police Department, and I thank them for their dedication to that relationship. I'm also happy to share this evening news that the BUCO bill to prevent childhood drug abuse has passed the Senate Education Committee. This program, and I think we can all be very proud of this, is modeled after Project Positive Choice, which is a successful drug and alcohol education program that has been part of the eighth grade curriculum at Copeland Middle School in Rockaway Township for more than two decades. Our school community has benefited from a strong partnership with the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance under the leadership of Mr. Les Wexler. Mr. Wexler of the district is tremendously pleased at the prospect that other school districts may be supporting in the replication of this program, which holds so many benefits for students. And we look forward to that bill as it is poised now to be voted on by the full Senate in New Jersey. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. McLaughlin?
Just to piggyback on the last thing, Mr. Wexler, you went down to Trent on Monday and testified for the committee, so.
I do have one question about the cameras, just for the public's knowledge, the status of the elementary schools. I understand all these cameras were for Copeland. Are we fully equipped already at all five elementary schools?
Yes, we have both indoor and exterior cameras that are in place in all of our elementary schools. They're also accessible so that we have, we're able to view those from central office as well. And if we are offsite, we're also able to view them. So we have, we have really great coverage in the district, and those are all digital cameras that are installed at the elementary level.
Thank you. Moving on then. This is the minister's report.
Good evening. Since we last met just six days ago, we have been hit with two snowstorms, one last Friday and one late Sunday night. I would like to take this opportunity to thank both our transportation and maintenance custodial departments for their hard work in getting the schools ready for the students and staff. We are fortunate to have such hardworking people in these key positions in our district. We have installed our first stop alarm cameras on two buses. They were delivered and installed last week and are making their way around Rockaway Township. I would also like to thank the members of the board, the board, for their review of the budget and their thoughtful questions during last week's work session. It is good to know that I have many pairs of eyes looking over the numbers along with me. Our next budget meeting will be held on Thursday, March fourteenth. Our state income figures should be available sometime tomorrow, March seventh, which will allow us to move closer to reducing our finalized budget for the nineteen-twenty school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. DeCroix? If not, curriculum report.
Good evening. I would like to begin my report this evening by sharing information with the community about the soon-to-be-released New Jersey School Performance Reports. These reports are set to go public on or around March seventh. I distributed a letter to the community earlier this week to ensure our families know how to access these reports and are aware of changes made to the reports. The data contained in these reports and other sources of data has and will influence our continual planning and reflection about our core academic programs and services. To that end, I would like to take a moment to remind the community about the changes made to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, previously known as PAR. I applaud the NJDOE for their efforts to reduce the amount of testing time while also ensuring that the test design will still allow for districts to conduct trend analysis dating back to 2014. To align with these, with these reduced testing times, we have posted a revised testing calendar on our website where we will also set aside appropriate time for any makeup assessments that need to be administered. We do value this data and we do hope the community will support, support us by prioritizing student attendance for these assessments. Moving forward, I'd like to thank Principal Maragon and the third grade team at DBO. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to observe Principal Maragon lead his third grade team through a detailed analysis of state's assessment data from a year ago. The teachers' initial focus was on math scores and they conducted this analysis side by side with the third grade curriculum. The teachers deliberated various student misunderstandings that data supported and discussed adjustments they would like to make to their instructional priorities to better align with circumstances. I was truly inspired by the strengths-based approach the team demonstrated in their analysis and applaud the teachers and Principal Maragon for their work. I know we will be seeing more of this work occurring across our schools in the future. I am pleased to report I received a lot of good feedback about the sample classroom library order I shared with the grade group teams during our last PD day. We are on track to finalizing an order in the coming weeks to ensure we have our libraries in our classrooms before the start of the new school year in September. I also had an opportunity this past week to visit a school in Paramus where they have implemented a similar balanced literacy model over the past five years. I'll be working to schedule a site visit for our grade group facilitators and some other teachers during the morning of June fourth to visit that school. Lastly, we received several data sets from our regional high school about our student performance recently at the high school level. I'll be working with our new data manager to begin sharing this data with the community as another important reference point to inform our ongoing reflection and planning at future meetings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, a question. When will the board be aware of the data set you're referring to? When will the board be able to find out about that information about how our students are?
I believe we're on track to have my first, to layer, for me to layer into my next board report. So the next board meeting, which I think is March twentieth, my board report should begin to contain some information about it. And then my plan is to begin to roll it out over a series of board reports. Sort of a consistent narrative.
I will comment that this is something that the board has asked for for many, many years, and I'm happy to hear that it's finally going to happen. So thank you, and it can only help as we move forward. Moving on then to committee reports. Any committee reports since Wednesday of last week? Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday of last week. I have one because we just came up with dates on the Bus Drivers Association and the Board of Education will be beginning negotiations. Their contract expires on June thirtieth of this year. So our first meeting with the bus drivers will be held on March twenty-ninth. And the negotiation team would be Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Cherico, and myself. Moving on then to page four, recommended for board action, beginning on page four, ending on page seven. There'll be no public participation by law, there can't be. This was all discussed in executive session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Helberg? At the end of this vote, when it is done, this would be addressing the employment of Christina Dalapaloo?
Dalapaloo, right.
I was gross. I'm sorry. As our Director of Special Education, we'll ask her, we'll formally introduce her and ask her to say a few words as soon as the vote is taken. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Can you come on over to the microphone and say a few words to the community? They'd get to know you.
I'm Christina Dalapaloo. It's an Italian name, but it's the only piece of me that truly is Italian. I'm very excited to be here and joining Rockaway Township. I've been smiling nonstop since I met with the administrators last week. I was a special education teacher. I taught middle school, elementary. I also taught regular education. So I'm very excited to be started. So I'm very excited to be started and partnering with parents in the district. Thank you.
Welcome again. Moving on. Page seven, to HIV determination. May I have a motion please? Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith?
We discussed, we have only the current investigations that were discussed in the executive session this evening, one which was unconfirmed, number 25, and number 26, which was confirmed. And those will be voted on at the next meeting and receive final confirmation.
Since there were none from last meeting, there's no need to have a vote. Moving on then, to education, beginning on page seven, ending on page eight. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber? Board discussion? I'm sorry. Any board discussion? If not, I can open to the public if anyone has questions about this section. If not, then let's have a roll call. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to special education, beginning on page eight, ending on page eight, nine, ending on page nine. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks? Board discussion? If not, I can open to the public? Roll call please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to administration, beginning on page nine, ending on page nine. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? I also have two items to read in. There'll be numbers five and number six under administration. Recommended for board action for number five, New Jersey Sustainable Schools Grant. Motion to authorize the submission of a New Jersey Sustainable Schools Grant application from DBO School to PSENG for $2,000. That would be number five. And number six, motion to authorize the submission of a New Jersey Sustainable Schools Grant application from C.A. Dwyer School to PSENG for $2,000. So Dwyer's number six, DBO is number five, both for $2,000. Board discussion? Dr. McLaughlin, do you want to explain what this is?
Yes, so there are three grants submissions. These are all part of the New Jersey Sustainable Schools Program that the board committed to a few meetings ago. And we had our first district green team meeting, which time we viewed all elements of the sustainable program. It'll be a multi-year commitment, but one of the opportunities that we have as a participant in this program is to apply for grants. And the grants can be used for a variety of activities that are environmentally friendly, that reduce our carbon footprint. These are all activities that our schools have been eager, have been a part of up to this time certainly, and are eager to formalize as part of this program. And three of our schools very quickly were able to assemble applications before the March 15th deadline. These opportunities will be repetitive and most certainly look forward to taking the opportunity to fund these initiatives through these grants as they become available.
Thank you. Hopefully they will, and that will be great for our district. I can open to the public if anyone has any questions? If not, roll call please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to finance, beginning on page 10, ending on page 10. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks? Board discussion? Then I have one. Number two, the grant. Can you explain please what that's for?
I'm going to actually defer to Dr.
As part of our partnership with Montclair State University, we received this grant as part of the facilitation that when the teachers get the certification to become certified, so they can apply for the grants. This is one of those grants.
Thank you very much. Any other board discussion?
Just wanted to give it, um, we discussed a little about clocks.
Yes, so there is a, this has been a historical discussion, as the board knows. Our clocks have been non-functional in all of our schools for a long period of time. And this will address that throughout the district by providing a totally revamped clock system. The, we elected to go with a basic clock package. These are clocks, and they will be telling the time. They will not be a combination of PA digital clocks that also service as alarm systems. There's a lot of combos that are being presented at this time to school districts. We felt we just wanted to keep it simple. We just want to have the time uniform throughout the schools. It has been a complaint and certainly something that we shouldn't have to have an initiative about, but this should, this should address it. And this is a very reasonable estimate, given the amounts that we were examining. So we're looking forward to this project. Being in place certainly for September when our students arrive in school and we'll actually be able to look up and see the same time, and actually today they're pretty good. And have that, you know, reconcile with the time that the rest of the East and Seaboard is on.
Thank you.
Just to confirm that the recurring clocks are way beyond right there.
Oh, yes. Yes, I, we have examined the ability to repair clocks and and unfortunately, when you look at the price of repairing clocks, and we had a few clocks that were done earlier in the year, economically it doesn't make any sense to do that. We would certainly be much better off taking care of the whole system versus doing this in any kind of piecemeal fashion.
Okay, thank you. I can open to the public if anyone has a question? The finance? If not, roll call please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to policy, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? I'll defer to Mrs. Mezick.
On the agenda this evening, we have the following policies for a first read. All of them except for policy 7250 for oral justory adoption. The last one I mentioned, the policy 7250, the school facility needs. We did do some revisions to that, to streamline. As I said, that's policy 3217, use of corporal punishment. Policy 3230, excuse me, 3233, political activities. Policy 3245, research projects by staff members. Policy 3270, professional responsibilities. Policy 3280, liability for pupil welfare. Policy 3281, inappropriate staff conduct. Policy 3282, use of social networking sites. Those were ones that are just there to re-adopt. And again, as I said, policy 7250 is the last one on for a first read. School facility needs. Are there any questions about any of the policies?
On 3282, use of social networking sites. You did add number eight on that?
Yes, we did. And the second is a motion to approve the following policies for a second reading. Policy 2422, health and physical education. Policy 2431.3, practice of preseason heat acclimation for school-sponsored athletics and extracurricular activities. Policy 2610, educational program evaluation. Policy 3230, outside activities. Policy 3244, in-service training. Policy 4219, commercial driver's license controlled substance and alcohol use testing. Policy 4216, dressing and grooming. And policy 0168.1, reporting and photography. Vote, I think, of the vote meeting. Sorry, questions? So with the vote, the policies that were on for a second reading will become part of our policy map.
I know that I was outspoken at the last meeting with several corrections, and I thank you for taking care of all of that in such short-term turnaround time. So I truly appreciate it, and I saw them reflected in the legal version that that looks online. Thank you. Any other board comments? I can open to the public if anyone has a comment? One second. May I have a motion please to open to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Dr. Montar?
Philip Montar, to our bureau. Last week, I asked a question about policy 4219, and I was assured by the superintendent that we followed up on that, so please.
And we did follow up, and policy 4219 does contain a provision that indicates in the event of a bus vehicle accident, the driver will be tested as part of our protocol.
Here's the line.
The question is, is the driver suspended at that time with pay, without pay, or whatever?
Yeah, so the, when testing is being done for that period of time, until such time as we have reason not to, if there's any suspension that would be required, that would be a paid suspension.
Anyone else from the public? May I have a motion please to close to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks? May I have a roll call please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to old business. Does any board member have any old business? At this time, does any board member have any questions about the budget discussions we had last week? To be continued on the 14th, but anything for today? We're actually awaiting the number from the, from the state of New Jersey on what our A will be, so we can finalize that. So thank you for letting us know when that happens. New business?
I just have one item of new business. On March 5th, I participated in a webinar, Guide to Using the New Jersey School Board Association's Chief of School Administrator Vibration Tool. Because it is a new process. I did actually print out the PowerPoint if anybody needs it. If not, there's a lot of information on the website.
Thank you.
And then I also will be reviewing a webinar on March 12th, and it has to do with professional development and the organizational administration in regards to technology.
Great, thank you so much. We look forward to hearing about that. If nothing else, I can open it up to the public if anybody has any comments on agenda or other items? If not, may I have a motion please to adjourn?
Second.
Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Brooks, thank you for coming and get home safely, and please come back.
Yes.